Stand for the invocation and pledge.
Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, even for the rain and that it serves a purpose. And we thank you that warm weather's coming. And we ask, God, that you help us, Lord, with all the legal situations that we have going on right now. We ask that you bring resolve to longstanding litigation and that in the future, we see less lawsuits, Father God. I thank you, Lord, for Sarah. She's recuperating. I thank you, Lord, for M.C. Davis today as he's battling cancer. We just ask, God, that you be with him. You strengthen him. And we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance as we make important decisions for the county. In all these names, we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everybody if you have any electronic devices to silence them at this time. Also, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Shane McGowan. He's our new Forest Area Supervisor. If you want to come forward for making any comments, Shane.
I'm Shane McGowan. I'm the Forest Area Supervisor for the Department of Health and Social Security. We've had a pretty good relationship throughout the county for years. And just want to make sure y'all know that we'd like to continue that. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. I also know what we're hearing on our, I always take the phone calls from State Forest. I can supply y'all some contact numbers if they need.
But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, we'll move on.
Any questions?
Just welcome.
Thank you and welcome, Shane. All right. I'd also like to recognize some of our athletes within the county. Congratulations to Paxton High School Girls Basketball Team for going to the state finals. Unfortunately, I think they played Freeport High and got beat. And of course, congratulations, Freeport High School Girls Basketball. They are the District 1A Champions, state champions in basketball this year. But congratulations to both of them. All right.
And the boys only lost them along by two. I was there. Two points. It was awesome.
Right. Well, thanks to the coaches, Coach Williams and Coach Myrick, for the job they've done over the last year and the years prior to. Okay. Call this meeting to order. Regularly scheduled board meeting, February 24, 2015. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for everyone's knowledge, Commissioner Enfield is in DC on a lobbying effort. Commissioner Commander is recuperating from some health issues. Commissioner Enfield, as chairman, asked Mr. Chapman to sit in and act as chair today. So we appreciate him taking that role on. For changes and additions and considerations to the agenda, we ask for additions. We request to advertise and hold a special meeting here, presentations from engineering firms for County Road 181C and Walton Bridge Road. We're going to request permission to apply for a total maximum daily load water quality restoration grant. Mr. Davis is going to ask you to set an executive session for Sandeston Investments LLC versus Walton County. Under deletions, Mr. Davis is asking you to request that you remove the contract for the sale of real property in Mossy Head from the agenda. And under the TDC, the item regarding the letter to Jeff Miller, we're asking to remove that from the agenda as well.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve with additions and deletions.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I think we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one, just one minor addition to the minutes of January, February the 10th. I'm sorry. On page six, I just wanted to make sure that on the AVCON paving in paragraph 1, 2, 3, page six, that we look at non-asphalt surfaces as per the AVCON recommendations. I just want to put that in the record.
Okay.
So it should read at the end, maybe, "County will consider non-paved surfaces for the parking improvements as per the AVCON recommendations." Thanks.
Well, any public comments at this time? Seeing none. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we're going to go a little bit out of order with your permission. Superintendent Anderson is here with a request for the board. She's got some other meetings she needs to attend. So we're going to move her up in the agenda and ask her to come and present her request to the board this time.
As you come forward, just a reminder, be sure you identify a name for the clerk. And if need be, spell the last name. Is that okay with you, Kim? Tina?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come this morning. I want to introduce to you Ms. Deborah Noyes, who is our Chief Financial Officer and is a big part of this initiative that we're taking now, which is our half-mill referendum, that we are asking you to place on the ballot, approve and place on the ballot for the May 19 special election. This is, of course, to get our half-mill referendum back on the ballot so that voters of the county can consider if they want to continue that half-mill referendum that goes into our general operating budget, which has been a big part of us having a very quality school district academically as well as athletically. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for announcing our student athletes. But we will ask if you will consider and approve that. Thank you.
When is the date of that election?
May 19.
And the best I remember, it's always passed. We've always, the voters have always...
Thus far, the voters have been very generous and passed by a large margin. It's about a 6.2...
6.4.
Four. It's varied, but it's about a $6.4 million initiative that is strictly in the hands of the voters on May 19.
Right. And just, you know, just in summary, we would not be raising taxes. It would just be moving a pot of money from one place to another.
Actually, it's somewhat like that, yes. During the first election, the sitting board at the time decided to take the general operating, raise the millage a half mill while they reduced the capital outlay millage a half a mill. So it was a trade-off. And the voters have been extremely generous to allow that for now 12 years. And we're going for our fourth time. It certainly makes a large difference in our schools.
And even doing that in the capital outlay part, our facilities are excellent. I mean, the best I've seen, they're just truly state-of-the-art facilities. So we have not suffered by doing this.
Take a tour anywhere throughout this state, you won't find any better. Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
All right. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item is requests from Florida Community Services Corp., we know as Regional Utilities. Ms. Melissa Pilcher is here with Mark Galvin. I'll let you introduce Mark, and they will make their requests to the board.
Good morning. Thank you. Melissa Pilcher with Florida Community Services Corp. of Walton County. We're here this morning to present a request for the refunding of our Series 2006 bonds with the Series 2015 through resolution and six supplemental trust indenture. I'd like to introduce Mark Galvin, our financial advisor from First Southwest. And he's here to do a presentation on them.
Good.
Good morning. For the record, Mark Galvin, First Southwest Company, Orlando, Florida. As far as you have a presentation I put together, not too sure, just click here or this will auto...
Right arrow.
Oh, okay. You got it? Okay. On page one of the presentation, if not, I've got hard
copies to pass out if that makes it a little bit easier than to go forward here.
Make sure the clerk gets one, please.
Oh, yes. I got one right here. Thank you. Page of the presentation, what we've done is I've summarized some of the outstanding debt. Right now, currently, Florida Community Services or Regional Utilities has four issues outstanding. And I'm not going to go over this whole chart, just point out a couple of key items. With about $31 million outstanding, a little over $31 million worth outstanding, and debt service of an annual of about $3.1 million. The other key thing I want to be able to show on this right here is the ratings. And if you look on the bottom of, you'll see that they're rated by all three rating agencies. Very extremely high ratings. You're talking about AA3, AA, and AA from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. The next page just shows a little bit more of a graph type of thing showing the debt service. And the other key thing is that the debt service is relatively short. It goes out to 2031. What we're looking at right now is the possibility of being able to refund on page three, the Series 2006 financing that was done. What we're looking at trying to do it currently is to replace this bond issue with a bank loan. Try to get some debt service savings. Once again, we have extremely high ratings on there, and we hopefully get very attractive interest rates. Back on February the 9th, we sent out RFPs for bank financing to refund approximately $14 million worth of outstanding '06. We're hoping to be able to get those responses back on this coming Friday. And then, one thing I wanted to point out, we're not extending the life of the loan. We're just looking for annual debt service savings to take advantage of this low-interest rate market. Also, the bonds will continue to have for additional security for, under the resolution, a fully-funded debt service reserve. If you, on page five, what I want to point out is that if we're fortunate enough to be able to get the interest rates on the very bottom portion of that chart, we're looking at total savings of almost $2 million, assuming that we can get interest rates at about 3%. That's going to save an additional $121,000 more annually in debt service and has a present value savings of $1.4 million. Traditionally, as you can see down there, present value savings ratio in our business, before you move forward with the deal, you just don't do a deal just to do a deal. You make sure that there's significant savings. And the industry standard is 3%. Some people have say, well, look at 5%. We're looking at close to 10% present value savings. That means total present value dollars to the amount of dollars that you're refunding. And on page six, this is just kind of an ongoing type of program that we've done. And part of the reason for the presentation is that for the last three years, you know, Florida Community Services has continued to look at ways of being able to reduce the cost of their debt. Just to this point alone, not taking account this issue, we've already saved $3.3 million in debt service refundings. That's over $252,000 per year. And what we're hoping, if we're fortunate enough to be able to get this deal done, we're looking at adding another almost $2 million. So we're looking at over $5.2 million in potential additional savings that they're able to provide to you. So what we're looking at right now is really the permission from the county commission to move forward with it, assuming interest rates move forward, come in there, that the rates remain attractive. You know, obviously, we're trying to beat time considering interest rates while they went down significantly in January. You know, they're bouncing back up in February. But we feel pretty comfortable at this point that we, hopefully, will be able to obtain these savings. But once again, we're not doing this deal just to do it. It's got to have good savings. If not, we'll wait. But this is the first step where you go forward. You get the permission from the county commission. And then we go back to the board when we get the bids in and go through. So hopefully, if we're fortunate enough to get all this thing done, we're looking at closing by March 31st. And with that, I'll ask, open up for questions.
Will this come back to the board with the interest rate percentage? Because I was, you said you assume that you're going to get 3%. What if you don't get 3%?
Well, I mean, once again, it's from the requirements. Since this is being done as through the Florida Community Services, but under the requirements of their franchise agreement, the county commission approves the issuance of moving forward with the debt. They will ultimately make the decision on whether or not to move forward with the savings. I'm sure that they'll come back to you and give you an update on what the savings was, is that it's not a hard target. It's just showing this is what the savings are right now. If interest rates go up to 4%, they're still going to be, I mean, not 4%, but if it goes up, there's still going to be significant savings. But I would expect that they'll bring back to you or shoot a memo to you, let you know the savings that was obtained in this financing. This is different than yours, where you approve the actual resolutions and stuff like that associated.
Yeah, I guess I was under the assumption that the 3% was a done deal.
It's not locked in. We do expect that. Our board has met, and they do approve, they just feel like there's significant savings here, even if that fluctuates just slightly. And they have approved for us to go move ahead with the refunding.
Okay.
We won't know until Friday until what the actual interest rate savings will be.
If it's any source of comfort, the school district just went out on $28 million for bonds, COPS bonds. They were new issues, and they came in a little less than 3%. We were very surprised and thrilled.
Okay.
I think that's a conservative estimate.
We try to be conservative on our bid, but of course, we're in a volatile market right now.
Right. Okay. Okay. Well, that answers my question. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Commissioners, the next item is from our Walton County Health Department. I believe Crystal Steele is here on behalf of Holly Holden, the Health Department, to request you to approve a fee for private site evaluators. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Steele. I'm the environmental manager for the Florida Department of Health in Walton County. We are requesting approval. We currently have a $65 county fee for our septic applications for all clients that submit an application that want us to do the field work for them. We do not charge that for our private site evaluators. When the fee was approved quite a few years ago, that was left out. And we are here requesting approval to charge the private site evaluators, that $65 fee.
So if a client wants to use a private evaluator, he's already paying that private evaluator to come do the work, right?
Yes, sir.
And yet, you want the Health Department to get $65 for the same work?
No, sir. The way it works is they usually pay the private site evaluator to handle everything. They're submit the application, do the research if there's old septic system on the property, anything that we normally would do. What they, the difference is, if it's private side evalu, what they're doing is they're turning the paperwork to us. We just don't do the field work for the site evaluation. We still issue the application, review the application, issue the permit, and inspect the system once it's installed. And then now, we're having to actually dig holes and verify the site evaluators' soils when we're doing the inspection of the system once it's installed. So they don't pay us the site evaluation fee because that's the one step that we're not doing for them. So we don't charge the site evaluators that fee.
If these are state-recognized site evaluators, the state doesn't have the trust in them to do what they're supposed to do when they go out there, and you have to come up and follow up behind it?
We have to inspect every system that is installed to make sure it's installed as for the permit. The private site evaluator does not inspect the system once it's installed.
Understood that.
But yes, sir, we do. The state does require us to verify their soils that they've dug during the site evaluation. Yes, sir.
And this is probably based on the work that y'all actually have to do?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah.
Wouldn't it be better just not use them? I mean, if you've got to double-check their work, I mean, it just doesn't sound productive to me.
It actually is very productive. They save us a lot of time as far as on the, normally if a client comes into us, we spend a lot of time having to draw the site plan. Those are fairly complicated because they have to be to scale. Private side evalu, private side evaluator will do all that for them. They can also, if it's a complicated lot, work with the client a little bit more and where they want the system. Where we have to go pretty much where they tell us they want it, that's where we have to do our permit, issue the permit. So for us, on the front end of it, it's quicker for us to issue a permit. We can, if the private side evaluator does the work, they can submit the permit, and we'll have it issued that day. Where for us, it takes, we're from at least three days because we have to wait for no cuts to almost two weeks to get to it.
So it's a lot more efficient, and people can get their septic tanks done quicker?
Yes, ma'am, get their permits.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You thought I wasn't going to do that, did you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next four items are regarding our local Restore Act Committee and our POT1 funding. And we'll take, we're actually going to move item E up to D. And what we're, in this item, we're asking you to approve the Restore Act Project Funding Application and Evaluation Matrix for Accepting Potential Applications for Local Restore or POT1 Projects. This is one of the primary objectives of the Local Restore Committee. They've put a lot of time and effort and work into getting this application before you, and we certainly recommend your approval.
Any comments from the board?
I know they've worked on this a long time, and I appreciate all their hard work on this. So I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay.
Neither. Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Next item, again, is regarding the Local Restore Committee and POT1 funding. We're asking you to approve for our administrative staff to hold a staff workshop during the week of March 23rd through 27th to explain the application and evaluation process which you've just approved to potential applicants for Restore POT1 Funds. So what we're asking is that you allow staff to do a public presentation and workshop to explain the process and the procedures associated with the application process you just approved.
So, is this going to be a, it's going to be a staff workshop, and the people, the public will be invited to...
We'll notice it so that the public certainly is invited, especially those that have interest in submitting projects, to at least give them a first look at what their process will be.
Would it be in the evening? Because, you know, a lot of people work during the day, and it's...
We can have it in the evening. It'll be fine.
And I would assume if someone already has a project in the bin, they'd need to come and, because they'll need to go through the, you know, the paperwork, probably refill out the paperwork for their project as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a request to approve to solicit project applications utilizing the process that we just approved within initial acceptance date of April 1. The POT1, the equal share state allocation, our direct component funds are the 35% Restore Act funds that will come directly to the Gulf Coast Counties. So Walton will receive 13.7, so on, of that total. We're still not sure when those funds will start flowing, but this will put us one step closer to being ready to utilize them to the fullest extent once they become a reality.
And the figures I have is 4.5 million that we can kind of count on to start with?
Uh.
That's what, yeah. That's what the graph said, 4.5. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Question on that, who will they submit the applications to? In other words, yeah.
They'll be submitted to the county, and I'll ask Melinda Gates if she knows exactly how that's going to work. But they will flow through the county to the Local Restore Committee.
Is it, is it going to, are they going to be able to fill these out online, Melinda? Or are they going to...
Yes, that's correct. We're going to be putting this application online, and then it'll be submitted into our portal. In a sense, there's going to be an email account for the Local Restore Act. That's where we're going to keep it for public records reasons. And then after that, we will print it out and make it accessible to the reviewers.
Okay. Okay. And the committee is still intact? The council's set up to review the applications, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Local Restore Feasibility Review Panel.
Yeah, that's what I had in my hand, wasn't it? Yeah. Request approved and create a Local Restore Feasibility Review Panel to evaluate applications for consistency with the Walton County comprehensive plan. So just another step in moving this initiative forward to get those funds in the right place at the right time.
Right. So this will be a staff group that will look at the applications to make sure they're consistent with our county comprehensive plan?
That's my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And will there be, who will decide how that's appointed and...
My recommendation, and you guys have a draft in your agenda item, that kind of outlines how we're thinking about setting up this particular staff committee. And then, we can bring back recommendations of particular staff that might be good candidates.
Okay. Okay.
Melinda, do you foresee this staff making recommendations back to the board about whether or not it's compliant with the comprehensive plan?
I foresee this staff making a recommendation to the Local Restore Act Committee.
And that will be part of their overall review and recommendation?
Will it make sure we have to advertise?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And you would probably sit on that panel to kind of guide the process?
With Billy Settle on that, too?
I'm sorry.
With Billy Settle on that, too?
I expect him to.
I do, too.
Be someone from the Planning Commission as well?
Planning Commission or Planning Department?
Planning Department, I'm sorry. Planning Department.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, Planning Department, local, you know, the Restore Chairman.
Yes. And we anticipate that somebody probably from the Planning Department, somebody from Environmental, maybe somebody from Engineering, Public Works. There's a large range. We can narrow that down to fewer or what would be appropriate.
Go ahead. The planners probably know, well, I shouldn't say that. I was going to say the planners probably know more about the comprehensive plan, but I don't want to be biased, so. For planners, that is. Anyway, go ahead.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I met last week with the clerk of court, the tax collector and supervisor of elections regarding their need for space and looking to the future for what those space needs may be outlined. What I suggested was that we ask the board today to somewhat sanction a working group comprised of the constitutional officers of their assignees and admin and those that have input into this, just to look at the space needs, where we are today, what the immediate needs are, what the short-term needs look like, and what the long-term needs could be. And just to provide back to the board a report over a period of time of what that looks like and what possible alternatives there are to... and what possible alternatives there are to accommodate this needs as we move forward. And Mr. Offerd was part of that meeting. If he's got any comments, we'd certainly like to hear from him.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is this, now, is this, is this due to the population growth and there's just more, there are more people? Is it because y'all have added more people or there's just a bigger demand in certain areas of the county or? Okay. 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 And is that because the population growth down there is just?
It absolutely is.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Well, you know, at some point, remember last time that, probably years ago, 2004 or '05, we had actually talked about building a, another building down there that would house a lot more people. You know, maybe that's something that we need to look at.
And I think the conversation, especially with the tax collector, that primarily her needs, she's got some needs here as well, but primarily it is in South Walton. And it's just the sheer number of people they're trying to service on a daily basis.
And the supervisor of elections as well, probably, the voting thing down there?
One of his biggest needs is gonna be storage space based on some things he sees coming up.
Okay. Now, I think that's a good idea. I would, unless there's any more discussion. Do we need a motion on that? Move to approve a work group?
It would help, yeah.
Move to approve a work group be formed to start looking at space needs. And maybe if there's any other departments as well that need space in and around the county, that we plug them in also.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
We request that you advertise to hold a special meeting to hear presentations from the engineering firms from CR 181 and Walton Bridge Road. And we would suggest that the March 27th, 24th, meeting at 8 o'clock here.
Okay. I have a conflict of interest because one of the firms is, has a relative of mine that works there. So I will be not voting on that, so I will not be attending that meeting unless y'all just think I need to be here.
Well, I'm just wondering if, how far down the chain is this possible conflict that?
You mean relative wise?
Oh, it's a relative of yours?
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Commissioner, you could actually vote to set the meeting, just not vote on who's gonna be.
I was just gonna announce that I wasn't gonna be here for that vote because I have a member of my family that's in one of the firms.
Okay.
Is that what you meant by chain?
Well, I was just wondering, you know, if you go back to when I first came on the board, we was concerned about C.W. Roberts and my son-in-law working there. And of course, I went through the process of getting a AG's opinion and he wasn't.
Okay. Well, this person is very close on the family tree, so, shall I say?
Okay.
And actually, the rules have changed a little bit. One of the things I learned Friday is you can announce a conflict if you think the relationship would create an inability for you to make a fair and impartial decision, so.
Yeah, this is a, this is a close relative of mine and I, I don't want even the perception of, to look, yeah, so.
Okay, so we just need to, we need a motion for that special meeting then? We need a motion.
I move we set March 24th at 8 o'clock for the meeting on the engineers.
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Next item is a request to advertise the scheduled public hearing to determine the use of proportioned fair share funds for the proposed eastern 38 US 98 multi-use path. We've had this discussion earlier. This is just the next step in the phrase to utilize those funds. It would be the public hearing. So we would, just looking for permission to set that date. At the first possible meeting at South Walton Annex. Not sure it'll be the next meeting, but if we can get it advertised, we certainly will.
Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second in public comment. Come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. Name is Lee Moore, L.E.I.G.H.M.O.O.R.E. Just a quick request. I know we typically like to have these in South Walton, but we're running up against a time problem with, if this does get approved, getting it installed before summer season. So if we could get it scheduled, if you approve it, for the next possible meeting, whether it's here or South Walton, that would be the preference of folks working on it.
The next meeting will be in South Walton, right? March 10th?
I don't know if they can get it advertised in time according to DeeDee, so.
Can get it advertised in time?
If we can, we will.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll have it here.
Thank you.
Did we have a mo?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item, we ask you to consider approval process for assigning assistant road foreman duties to existing employees within a district crew. We have, it's been brought to our attention that there may be opportunities that would better serve the county if we had an assistant foreman within the road crews. The districts are large. They're more and more requiring off-hour leadership. I believe this would give us the opportunity that, in those areas, to fill a position, yet fill it from within the existing staff, not create a new FTE, but simply expand the duties of one of the existing employees. This is simply a process that we're asking you to approve and then we would move it forward as it fit the needs of the particular district.
It's not necessarily creating a requirement that all commissioners have a district assistant.
No, it was simply.
In the event that a need.
In the event there was a need, it would put the process in play that we could fill that need.
And I have a comment. It would certainly make my department go smoother because when my road foreman's out, then I know who's second, who's in charge, and I don't have to, you know, scramble to make sure that everything's covered. So, you know, our, my district starts at Paxton, goes all the way to Rock Hill. It's a vast area. Of course, you helped me with, with the, you know, projects, but this, I can see a real need for one in my department, in my district.
Any other comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Commissioners, we just were notified late last week as an opportunity to apply for a total maximum daily load water quality restoration grant. We don't have a lot of detail other than we know that it's time sensitive. We did get some feedback that there are some issues along the bay where that would impact the water quality of the bay positively if we could utilize some of these funds to do some of the work that have been identified. So we'd like your permission to move this forward. We'll certainly get you more detail as it becomes available to us. But the deadline is upon us, so with your blessing, we would get this put together and, again, make you aware of what the details look like as we move it forward. But it's simply a grant to improve water quality along South Tatchee Bay. Kelly Horton brought it to our attention, along with staff from Brad Derrick's office, recommending that it would be good for some of the initiatives they know we're working on. So we'd ask you to approve that and we'll move that project forward.
I have a question. Is this something Angie will be working on?
Angie and the engineering staff. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Next item is from Public Works regarding the chain link fence at Helen McCall Park. If you recall, the last time we went out for bid for this, we only got one bid. We resubmitted it and we would recommend that Allied Company of the Wiregrass be awarded the bid in the amount of $12,461.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, we need to get that up and going, so let me know when it's done. Thanks.
Next item, Commissioners, we've been approached by Macedonia, Macedonia and Missionary Baptist Church regarding some property that they own adjacent to a county dirt pit. They've asked that we consider purchasing 14 acres of their property, which would allow us to expand our pit. There's some value to that. If we wish to consider that as a possibility, our first act would be to have an appraisal done of that property. We believe that if it's, if we could purchase it at the right place, there would be some value of utilizing it as a pit for a number of years for county road projects. So our request is if you're interested, we would begin the process and order an appraisal to determine the value.
For the board's notification, the present pit, which is Macedonia Church Pit out there, is just about dugout. Am I right on that, Wilmer? And I do not have a pit in my district whatsoever, so I'm having to haul, go get dirt from other places, sometimes on the other side of the county to get to a project in my district. This one here is just north. It's in the southern end of yours, Commissioner Jones. Macedonia, I mean, and McKinnon Bridge is gone too as far as the availability of dirt. So it would be a benefit, at least on the central eastern side of the county, to have the pit as long as we can meet the parameters set forth in our land acquisition ordinance.
And at some point, I'd like, I know maybe the appraisal needs to come first and then I'd like, I mean, I know it's really close to our pit, but let's don't assume anything and do some soil borings and make sure that the soil's, you know, in good soil. So at some point down the road, we'd, I'd like to do that as well.
I think some of that work's already been done, maybe determined some volumes, but we will make sure that it's exactly what we need before we, I think we got.
Radiation is a little step deeper. I'm getting some experts from my home. My husband is telling me all about this radiation and so, so just, you know.
Yeah, we don't need your radiation, that's for sure.
Yeah, so down the road sometime, you know, thank you.
Let me ask you a question. What is the little white space, you know, that shows up? It's like a clearing on the, on the map?
Are you, what are you talking about? The little right-hand corner?
Yeah.
That's the pit right now.
Oh, that's the pit right now. Is it, is it, is it land used properly for this? Would we need to, I guess they'll find all that out.
Yeah, we're supposed to, because right now, based on our ordinance, we got a thousand-foot setback around any structures out there. There's a house to the northeast, give or take, correct me if I'm wrong, but to the northeast of that, that's within that thousand feet that, but we don't believe it really impact because we've been doing that operation out there for decades anyway. So, but we'll, we'll have to work around that.
Okay, and you'll get like wetlands and soils and all that?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna do all around that.
Okay. Yeah, I move that we look, take a look at it for sure.
Second.
Okay, to take a look at it, do we need to maybe expand that to allow them to go out and do the appraisal at this time or get the appraisal?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That's what you meant, okay.
Yeah, move forward with the process of, that we have to go through to look at property.
That's your second, Susan?
Second, yes, it is.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
We've gotta get you some super-duper dirt out in your district. It's, you know, it's critical.
Well, we sure do need it. It's bad.
Every rain we have, we need more too.
Yeah, it's all down the South Tatchee Bay.
Commissioners, our last item would be regarding the request to approve a resolution to amend the adopted capital improvement schedule to add improvements to county parks and recreational facilities to include Driftwood Estates Park. You approved in January the staff to apply for the federal land and water conservation fund grant to assist in construction of this park. It requires that the park be part of the county's capital improvement project, so this would fulfill that component of that requirement.
So, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Commissioners, just a quick update. We were asked to prepare a private partner agreement with HOA down there for some additional things. You'll have that at your next meeting, so that's all run together.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We request that we pull number one based on some conversations, I believe, that Mr. Jones has had with the congressman's office. Item number two, Billy's full-time job at the pit, the other pit. It's kind of impinge upon his ability to serve on the board. And so we'd ask that you appoint a replacement with some experience in tourism, environmental or economic development. I think we had some conversation with admin and we, I believe, had come to the recommendation of Melinda Gates, is what DeeDee told me. So we'd ask for your consideration on that. Point the second member, I'm the other member of the board. And in fact, this group met down in South Walton at our offices last week.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Now, Billy is the environmentalist component of, correct, for this board?
He, he, yes, sir, originally he was.
Originally he was?
Yes, sir.
And the recommendations replace it with someone other than an environmentalist background?
Well, environmental or economic development, the other eight counties all have a tourism person on there. And then they kind of have a mishmash of either an economic development or environmental representative. Some of the people, the economic development and the tourism person is the same person because the chamber and the tourism.
Melinda is our environmental person. She would be, it would be a switch, Melinda. It would be, if she has the time. I know that she's loaded up with all kinds of things.
That, that was the question.
Has anybody asked her? If she?
Actually, we did and we invited her to last Thursday's meeting. She may wanna, you know, uninvite herself.
She's hiding back there.
Just wanted to make sure that she's good.
Yes, I've taken on this nomination. I think I can handle it. Between Jim and I, we can split up some of the distance traveling and make sure that there's a representative from the county at each meeting.
Okay.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Item number three for, under our heading, Commissioners, is a request that the board advertise the scheduled public hearing for March 10th, although I think that's getting loaded up, but we'd go ahead, for $1.269 in dollars, and that's to support the AFCON parking study that you determined last time. We need to move some money. And so that requires a budget amendment and a public hearing.
How much is that again?
It's $1,269,500. I don't think we put in the $425,000 for, right there at Gulf Place, because until we own the property, we didn't see the need to actually shift that money out of our reserves and create another problem.
And also too, you know, we talked about this in the minutes, is that, you know, if you, if you, we don't have to pave all these spaces, which, which, you know, could be the case.
Actually, we're not looking at paving any of them.
Okay, good.
Well, we're looking at the open pavers, if you know what I'm talking about, so that we can fill them in with gravel or grass or whatever, so that they're pervious and it perks the water. Because what, the direction based on conversation with Commissioner was we don't need to create any more stormwater problems to solve the parking problem.
Right, okay.
It doesn't need to be one or the other. We need to address both.
Okay, okay. So TDC will be, will be funding those spaces, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, all of them.
Okay.
100% tourism.
Good answer.
After, after you do the legislative finding, which I think has to be done before we can actually spend any money.
I think we already have that, but because last?
We were looking, and I don't think we do.
We were looking, and I don't think we do, actually. We had on various and sundry other things, but I don't think we ever.
Because I thought it said you could pay for parking, parking, land and parking facility, but, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Alford's shaking his head. It makes him much happier.
Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, having a budget amendment?
Second.
Public hearing for a budget amendment.
Budget, yeah, public.
Second, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you probably saw the front page of the paper today where Seaside was the number 15 sexiest beach town in the country. Of course, for some reason, we can't get front-page coverage, because two weeks ago, they were the Travel Channel's number-one family-friendly beach community in the country. And so we would rather have that word out, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that we did put that information out, but for some reason it didn't. It's not quite as eye-catching as.
Who's on the panel that suggests that it's the sexiest beach?
It's some website I never heard of. It's like a dating website service.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I'm like, why would you, over the Travel Channel?
Do you have any idea what the criteria is? No, we won't go there.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And subject to your questions, that's, that's all we have.
Any questions?
Move.
Thank you, Mr. Bagby.
Yes, sir.
You.
All right. Mark, you got anything?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I just have one item, and I appreciate you letting me in late. We are requesting the Board of County Commissioners schedule a special meeting to hold an executive session on March 10th, 2015, at the South Walton Courthouse Annex at 3:00 PM to discuss Sandeston Investments LLC v. Walton County, case number 2014 CA-200, and Sandeston Investments LLC versus Walton County, case number 2014-CA-369. We would request attendance at the meeting to be the Board of County Commissioners, Bill Chapman, Bill M. Feld, Sarah Commander, Cindy Meadows, and Cecilia Jones, the County Administrator, Larry Jones, Mark Davis, the County Attorney, Sidney Noes, the Assistant County Attorney. The meeting would be recorded by a certified court reporter who will prepare a verbatim record of the meeting, which will be sealed until the conclusion of the litigation, and the executive session would not be open to the public pursuant to Section 286.0118 Florida statutes. By way of quick background, we have had one full-day mediation session. We have scheduled a second on March 3rd. There are offers and discussions that we need to come to you guys and talk about.
And this is the lawsuit about Osprey?
Compliance hearing, yes.
Compliance, Osprey Cove, and all that. Okay, Osprey Land, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
When would the session be? When did?
I'm proposing 3:00 PM on, before the meeting at South Walton.
March 10th.
March 10th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. I did, Mr. Feld.
That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Meadows?
I don't have anything at this time.
Commissioner Jones?
I do. At some point, the, the number of rooms for lodging got changed to 125. It was, I think during the recession, and everybody was kind of asleep and not expecting growth. And on 38, I really would like to go back to the 75 rooms, especially on 38. There might be some other areas, but, but 38, I have a real issue with it being 125 rooms. That's just too much for that, for 38. Again, I will say that I believe our vision was never to become an extension of Panama City Beach. It was to be, to stay unique and special. And so I think if we went back to the 75 rooms, that would really enhance in.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, too, because I think, I think, you know, the Watercolor Inn has, I think, 60 rooms, and I think it really is more compatible with.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
More compatible with, with, with the area and with the limited infrastructure that we have in the area.
So my motion would be to amend the comp plan and land development code to change the number of rooms from 125 units to 75 units on Highway 38. And my motion would also include new language in the, in these plans to, and to advertise and send to the planning commission. I think it would just be minor changes and just actually just scratching out 125 and making it 75 on 38, and, and just taking it forth, forth as quickly as we can.
Yeah. The actual, the actual motion would need to be just to request the planning commission to make the change, schedule a public hearing, to amend the comp plan for that purpose.
Could we, could we say 38, and I think you, I think I would like to include the connector, north-south connector roads, because they all load onto 38. I think one of the issues is loading onto 38, so I would like to include the north-south connector roads as well. Would you offer that amendment? Would you accept that?
I would. I would amend that, and also what Mark said.
Thank you.
That would be my amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is going to be to direct.
Direct staff to prepare the, prepare the change in the comp plan and schedule a public hearing for that purpose.
All right. Is that y'all's understanding of the motion? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay, I don't have anything to present. Commissioner M. Feld is absent. Additional public comments. Richard Flowers, if you will, come forward, state your name for the record.
How's all y'all doing today?
Fine.
My name's Richard Flowers. I live in Freeport. I live off of Joe Dugger Road. I'm here on request on behalf of the property owners of Freeport, Florida, off of Joe Dugger Road. Joe Dugger Road has become a very heavy-traveled road to all of us that live down it, work, childcare, emergency services, soon to be traveled for school, and a lot of kids live down there now. When it rains, the county part off of Highway 20, it gets pretty slick. It gets pretty, pretty nasty. On my phone here, I have a picture, but it don't do the justice of the whole road. It becomes very slippery as well due to the red clay, the mechanical problems that it puts on the wear and tear of the cars and the trucks that live up and down it. Literally, if you're a car, when it rains real bad, if you don't go fast, you're in the ditch. And if you got kids, that's never good. As well as when you go to pass one another, it's kind of narrow. Personally, my wife has almost slipped off in the ditch before my kids in the car hit a tree. So, and if you would like, I don't have a whole lot of professional documentations here, but what I did have going on, I'll start this end, is if you look on Conversation 1, that's the county maintaining part of the road, and Conversation 2 is.
Richard?
Yes, sir. Sorry. Conversation 2 is, is part of what we call East-West Joe Dugger Road. I have a written document there that, that everyone up and down East-West Joe Dugger Road, we've signed a petition or that, asking the county and giving the permission to please come down and maintain this part of the road as well. More residents have moved down Joe Dugger Road, and we call this home. Trying to pass one another on Conversation 2 on that road, as well, it gets very tight, very narrow. If, personally, if we were to have a wildfire back there, or a, or an emergency, down that road, a couple culverts are there down there. And personally, us that live down there have, went down and personally put the culverts in the road, personally keep and maintain ourselves, and that's money out of our pocket that we have to do ourselves.
Richard, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you see the, what we're looking at on the screen there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joe Dugger's the road to your left, is it not? And JW Hollington Road is the one on the right-hand side, and the yellow in between is the connector road that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Just around the corner to the left there, the county stops maintaining, it's been, it's probably maintained from there all the way over to the Hollington Road, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely. That's something we have to do ourselves.
All right. Approximately, what's the distance there?
From the, from the, from the end of where the county maintained part is to JW, it is roughly about two miles.
Two miles.
It's about two mile. Well, no, no, I'm sorry. It's about a mile and a half. It's about a mile and a half, because JW is, I mean, Joe Dugger is about a mile long.
And if I understand it, Richard, having been out there, especially during the flooding last year, I drove.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I literally personally had to carry my two-year-old child on my back across the border.
I seen what was there, as far as, there's several locations there that's got some bad-blown-out culverts.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're asking the county to come in and rebuild that road in there and begin to maintain it.
Well, basically, I'm just asking to, for the county to come down and, and just maintain it. Not, not to really put it on the map, not to come down there and pave it, just to make it to where it's maintainable and, and safe to get up and down it.
Have you talked with the owners that had bought that road?
Yes, sir. That's where that documentation is. I have right there. Everyone has signed.
There's some legal issues that are, concerns they'd have to do. They'd have to deed access to the county to use that road and maintain it. And you're saying all those people are in agreement?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Everyone is up in agreement.
You've got 11 signature lines, but only, and three of them are not filled in. Is that because they didn't want to?
That's because I couldn't get ahold of the people. One's Mr. Byrd, and, and another one, that, like I said, I couldn't get ahold of. But everyone up and down that road is, is in agreeance with just, just to come down and just.
How long have you lived out there?
About two and a half years, sir.
Okay. And I assume whenever you moved out there, you knew what that road was and what shape it is in?
Well, I wasn't under the, under the impression that it would get as bad as it does when it back in there. I understood that moving down there, that that road was going to become part of our job for the time being, but it's, like I said, it's become a, a real, a real problem. And, and another issue that, you know, there's people and kids coming down through there and tearing the road up, and this and that and the other. And personally, I've had property damage to my fence, and.
Richard, I'm gonna help you out on that.
Yes, sir.
Captain, Major Preston's sitting there, Captain Clark is sitting there.
Yes, sir.
Now, he's had an issue out there with some vandalism and damage to his personal property. Without getting into the great detail, contact me after. I could tell you what was said is totally incorrect. So I just bring that to y'all's attention. Anybody that lives on a private road has the same rights as anybody that lives on a county road, as far as their damage to their personal property. And I don't think he was given the service that he was, should have got. But anyway, we'll talk about that later.
And I'm just here, like I said, on behalf of, of the, the main part, the, the main part off of Highway 20, Joe Dugger Road, that red clay, like I said, it does get, it gets pretty nasty at times. When it doesn't rain, it's not too bad, but when it does rain, it gets absolutely horrible. It gets very, very bad. And when it, and when it doesn't rain, the divots on the side of the road, it, I mean, you literally just, you literally have to get off the side of the road to let another car come, or otherwise you're gonna wind up just tearing your suspension off the side of your car, or your truck, whatever you drive. But like I said, if you have a car, fortunately, I have a truck, but if you have a car that, that, then you live down there, I, I feel really sorry for some of the people that have cars down there, because, like I said, I've got straining in there a couple of times, because of all the rain. But I know we don't have rain all the time, but, you know, there are issues that.
Richard, your time is expired. I'll tell you what, I think maybe we ought to just direct staff to look at it, see what the cost of maintaining it would be.
Just maintaining it.
We can take care of that and bring you some information.
Yeah, just bring it back to the board, and we won't need it, I don't guess, in the form of a motion, just direction from staff. The rest of the board can concur.
Yeah. Is there any way you could get it on the rural roads, paving grants, and... Because it looks like it, I mean, I'm not familiar with that area too much, but it looks like it, it, does it connect into Windsor?
Well, it gets over there to the Hollington Road, which we'll.
Yeah, connects.
Is it, is it a road that is a, is a, you know, facility that would be a, a nice road to?
I'm just, I'll be honest with you. I think, I think possibly, you know, if we try to do something with something, I just, I see something like that possibly growing in there. And, and that's the reason I'm here before y'all, because I really want to see Freeport grow into something strong.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Yes, sir.
We'll be glad to take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, we're gonna take a 10-minute break and come back for the remainder of the agenda. We need to take care of on the original agenda, failure to approve the consent agenda. So, yeah. So I need a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Dice?
Mr. Chairman, we have several items that are being continued. You want to do those first, or as we go through them?
Let's go ahead and get the continued out of the way.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the first item on your legislative items is the mining ordinance, and we have a request to continue this item into the March 24th meeting.
So move. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the second item on your legislative agenda is the transit stop sign ordinances, and we are also requesting that to be continued to the March 24th meeting.
So move. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, and your, the last item we're requesting continue is number four on your quasi-judicial items, and that is Hidden Palms subdivision, and we are requesting that to be continued also until the March 24th meeting.
Move. Second.
And motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, it brings us down to the, the balance of the agenda is all the quasi-judicial items.
Anyone that anticipates testifying on any item on the quasi-judicial docket, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear, yeah, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you give before this board will be the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. If you'll do me a favor, when you speak, just tell us that you have been sworn in, okay? Anyone have any objections to any of the notices that were published for tonight, or today's hearings? There are none. Any commissioner have any ex parte contacts that you would need to disclose?
No.
Thank you.
Before we get started, you jumped over one.
I did, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. We missed.
Better take care of that.
We missed one. The request to reappoint Robert Sullivan to the Code Enforcement Board for 90 days until information on the special hearing officer may be brought back to the board.
So move. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay, which one are we gonna start? Number three?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're starting with Siboney Phase 2. I'll ask Tim Whaler from our staff to brief the board on this project.
Good morning. Tim Whaler, Planning Department. This is a major development order application that was submitted by Saks LaSalle, requesting the approval of an 11-lot, single-family subdivision on 1.87 acres within the Siboney planned unit development with a future land use of neighborhood infill. The project is located at the west end of Bachelor's Button Drive. It's 300 feet west of South Holiday Road. The Siboney PUD was approved in November of 96 for a total of 60 condominiums, 11 townhomes, 28 RV park spaces, and a lot reserved for future commercial use. Today, we have the, the 11-townhome portion before you, and this is the technical review of the 11 remaining dwelling units within that previously approved Siboney PUD. The project was approved at the February 12th Planning Commission. There are no, no known code violations on the subject property, and unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the proposed project will meet the requirements of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code with the following conditions. There will be a sidewalk buyout fee required at the time of plating for half of the sidewalk within the internal residential street. There is a public recreational buyout fee will be required also at the time of plating on this project, and a copy of the NPDES Notice of Intent and Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan should be provided prior to the project's commencement.
Any questions from the board?
Is, is that gonna be a private street, private cul-de-sac, or is it gonna be a public road?
It, it, it is gonna be a private internal street on the project.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any other questions right now.
Thank you. What's the board's wishes?
Don't we have to take?
I'm sorry. Is there any public comment? Or the applicant first, please. The applicant, come on up, ma'am. State your name for the record. I'm sorry about that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Ward from Saks LaSalle, on behalf of the applicant. The property is the final stage of the Siboney PUD that was approved in 1996. It was originally designed to be townhomes. They've reduced the intensity to single-family structures. They would be detached homes, approximately two-story in height, no more than eight, between 1,500 and 1,800 square feet, based on the building setbacks. There is a sidewalk buyout, and there's a small amount of area that's gonna be preserved for. uh, for, um, on the site. They are, uh, private streets, and then, uh, as well, the proposal between this one and Hidden Palms to the north, the roads that connect from south, from, uh, South Holiday Road into the subdivisions will be improved by the developer. So they'll have, um, improved, uh, structure, uh, infrastructure as well as stormwater to maintain the stormwater off the roadway.
That'll be Bachelor Button Drive?
Bachelor Button Drive will be improved in, insofar as it reaches over to Siboney RV Park and Dead Ends.
Right, okay. Living at, so from the south, I guess?
There's a cul-de-sac to the south on the subdivision. However, the north is open, they'll cross Bachelor Button, go through Hidden Palms, and on to Hatchu on the northern area. And I do have a site plan, I just, y'all have, y'all so, you're so more advanced than we were before, so it's very nice. It's really nice, you can see everything.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Michael Bennett. I live at, uh, twenty seventy-six, uh, uh, Senior Golf Drive, I mean, Unit four zero zero five in the Siboney, uh, condo. There are sixty units in that condo. I, it's a little unfortunate I have to come here, and I'll apologize for that, but, uh, I'm a Vice President of the HOA at this point, and as of yesterday, uh, none of the officers in the Siboney HOA condo had received public notice of this hearing. We probably should've been to, uh, the zoning meeting on the twelfth. I rece, I'm the only one that's received, uh, a notice, and I received that on February the nineteenth, and so there's a number of questions we might've been able to clarify at the zoning meeting, but unfortunately, I'm here to get them clarified, and probably the most concern was in terms of this development, whether or not there's, uh, a right-of-way or an easement from that proposal into the Siboney property, which would be adjacent to that, just, uh, to the, uh, east of us, along the, uh, along the, uh, northeast section of the, of the Siboney property there on the entrance, uh, in this process, and maybe the developer can clarify whether or not there is an easement i- in that, uh, in that section, or a plan for future easement in that, in that section would clarify.
Ms. Ward, can you answer that?
Yes, sir. Um, the property does not, will not have an entrance way through Siboney into the Siboney that's existing. They are, their entrance, their entry and exit for vehicular use, and as far as I'm aware, pedestrian use will be north-south except through Bachelor Button to get out to, um, South Holiday and north-south, and through Hidden Palms and out Hatchu to get to South Holiday. They are not anticipating or constructing any entrance way through Siboney at all.
That answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You got another one?
Uh, yes, it answers the question, and that's clarified. The only other thing I would add, his comment, is that Siboney one, Siboney two, and then Siboney RV Park gets confusing to people in terms of who is who in this process, and, uh, and with all due respect and consideration, if the name would be altered in some way to help that clarification for emergency vehicles and, and property residents there, they seem to be confused about who is Siboney and who is not Siboney. We have three of them there now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any, go ahead.
I apologize. I meant to address as well, the public records, I mean, not the public records, the notifications were sent out according to the information received from the Property Praiser's website and the Property Praiser's office. So any, I received a, a great deal of letters back. The addresses were just, could not be delivered. The addresses were exactly as they were on the Property Praiser's website and through their information, so I'm not sure, uh, if the addresses are any different that maybe they did have on the tax roll.
Okay.
And that's-
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Any questions from the board?
Motion, um, motion to approve with the conditions put on by staff?
Oh, yeah, we sure do.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we need to close public-
Motion to close public- Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. What's the board's wishes?
Okay. Motion to approve the, um, project.
With the staff's-
With staff-
Conditions.
Conditions, yes.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Next item on your agenda is a Musset Bayou Manor Platte. Uh, this is a seen seventeen, single-family lots, uh, on nine point seven four acres with a future land use of conservation residential two to one. Um, again, staff recommends approval. And Tim Whaler's here, if you have any questions of the actual plat application itself.
Do you have any comments for, you don't have any?
What about the sidewalk? Um, are they, what's their proposal for the sidewalk?
Um, this project, uh, the original development order was to buy out the half of the residential sidewalk option. They have opted to actually build all of the sidewalk on the internal streets in this project, so-
Oh, good, thank you. That always is such a added plus to a community, this people place. Now, do they have to put one on Musset Bayou?
Um, let me check.
Did they, um, did they buy that out as well? Or are they gonna put one out there? Doesn't look like they, um, they're gonna put one out there, but don't they have to buy it, don't they have to buy it out if they're not gonna put one on the external road? Or is it just the internal road? Is that what?
I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and we're proposing to build all of the sidewalks within the development. And, uh, we are actually posting a letter of credit, just as the homes are constructed, we'll, uh, build the sidewalks as they construct the homes within-
Okay, good, good. What about on, do you have to build one on Musset Bayou on your property frontage?
We were not required to in the-
You're not required to?
No.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, entertain a motion, close.
Motion to close public comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. What's the board's wishes on the project?
Uh, motion to approve project with, um, the staff's conditions as stated.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Mr. Dice?
Mr. Chairman, next item on your agenda is number six, Alice Beach Block J Platte. Uh, this is the application submitted, uh, for fourteen single-family, single-family lots on one point five nine acres in Alice Beach, which has, has a land use designated to traditional neighborhood development in the Alice Beach PUD. Again, we recommend approval.
Hello again, David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and I'd just be happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me.
Any questions from the board? All right, any public comment?
Thank you.
Seeing none.
Motion to close public comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. What's the board's wishes?
Uh, motion to approve, uh, with staff comments.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Mr. Dice?
Mr. Chairman, the last item on your agenda is number seven, Alice Beach Block K Platte. Again, this is a plat application in Alice Beach, uh, nine, single-family lots on one point two four acres. Again, the land use is traditional neighborhood development in the Alice Beach PUD, and again, we recommend approval.
Any comments?
Just be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the board? Seeing none. Any public comments? Seeing none.
Motion to close public comments.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. What's the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Staff count, staff's conditions? Yeah, second.
Okay, we got a motion. Okay. Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Is that it? All of it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have.
Aye. We stand.
Can I ask David, um, Smith, uh, I know we've already approved this, but let me just ask you this question on Musset Bayou. Um, I noticed that the lots are, it looks like the lots are, the lots platted around the preservation area. In other words, how are you gonna keep people from clearing their lot, which is counted as preservation area?
The lots include the preservation areas, but there are extensive restrictions and covenants and restrictions that prohibit the clearing of the preservation as shown on the plat.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. I just, I, I wanted to ask that question and I forgot. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks.
Stand adjourned.
Band adjourned.